It is a gorgeous evening and I am pleased to see so many people here tonight. If we could all start by standing up and saying pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we could start off with administrator's report on the agenda posting and notification of the meeting to the media.
The agenda was posted at Three Lakes School, Sugar Camp School in the town of Sugar Camp, via email to the town of Three Lakes, the town of Monaco, and the Demer Library. And the media notified via email were the Vilas County News, the Northwoods River News, WRJO News, WXPR Radio, and WACD, WATK Radio.
All right, very good. And next, we go to amendments and approval of agenda. Do we have any amendments?
Yes, I've amended because I wanted to discuss inclement weather under the administrator's report. And when it was published, I did not have that topic listed for you, so that's, I wanted you to be aware. And then the second thing I would like to do is request that we move agenda items G and H up on the agenda because we have student representatives here with us this evening, and I would like them to be able to speak first.
Okay, so, we want to put those after the personnel report, is it?
I think that would be a good place for that, yeah.
Okay, all right, so after C, we're gonna do G and H. And students, you're more than welcome to stay for the entire meeting if you so desire to. All right, so those are amendments. I will seek motion for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with amendments as stated.
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any other further questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. And for the record, we do not have Terry with us tonight, so it's board members here. Next, we go to routine approvals. Approve minutes of the December 22nd, 2022 regular meeting and the January 11th, 2023 special meeting. So we have our minutes and our packs, and someone prepare to make a motion.
I do have an amendment to the December 22nd, 2022 meeting minutes. The vouchers and check register, there, we had an incorrect number on there for the ACH payroll check numbers. Should end in nine zero 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 three nine, I'm sorry, three nine three eight nine, rather than three nine three five six. The amounts are correct.
Okay. All right, any other amendments?
I'll make a motion to approve the December 22nd, twenty, twenty twenty-two minutes and with the amendment listed, along with the special meeting minutes from one January 11th, 2023.
Second.
All right, it's a motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Hearing none?
Um, actually, oh, that's, sorry, is that date, is that date correct or was it the fourteenth?
Hmm.
No, that is right, that is correct, I'm sorry, my apologies.
Yeah, that's from twenty twenty-two, it's a year old, yeah.
I think what...
We'll replace that.
You said December twenty-first, right? Because it was December twenty-first, not December twenty-second, right? I'm confused.
It was the twenty-first.
Right.
Yes.
Correct. And that's what it says on the minutes, but not on the agenda.
I will correct my motion. I would like to make the motion to approve the minutes from December twenty-first, 2022 with the amendment listed and the meeting minutes from January 11th, 2023 as presented.
I will second that as stated.
All right, very good. Any others? All right, I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. Next, we go to approving vouchers slash check register for the period of December 16th, 2022 through January 19th, 2023.
I'll make the motion to approve checks dated December 16th, 2022 through January 19th, 2023 for accounts payable checks number two 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 three zero zero one two seven through two 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 three zero zero one five seven, regular checks number one two seven five four three through one two seven six seven eight, and manual checks number five four one two through five four two zero in the amount of five hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. ACH payroll checks number nine zero 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 three nine three nine zero through nine zero 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 three nine five zero seven, and regular payroll checks number five nine two seven zero through five nine two seven zero in amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-one cents for a total of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-five cents.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any other questions? All those in favor with the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes four zero. Public comments. Would anyone wish to comment on any of the agenda items that we have tonight? All right, we'll move on to administrator's report. Terry?
Okay, I just would like to give the board an update. There's always the question of how many instructional minutes do we have built in? And we have used three snow days or cold inclement weather days. It's been a mixed bag of weather this year. I asked the principals to go ahead and check, and at the elementary level, we would still have over four and a half days banked. That, we don't wanna use them, but we do have that instructionally in place. And at the high school, junior high level, we have on the plus side of three, close to three and a half. So we are still okay, but when you start to get that close to that many days being used, I'm not saying we wouldn't discuss about possibly looking at some changes, but we do have a cushion yet within our schedule.
Okay. And that information is, as of today, then?
Correct.
It considers every last week and everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Anything else under that?
We're not gonna have any more snow or cold the rest of the year. We're done.
Yeah.
Knock on wood.
All right. And we will start the new business sector of the meeting, starting with the February meeting date.
The February meeting date for our regular board meeting will be on Wednesday, February fifteenth, at six o'clock here in the boardroom at Three Lakes.
All right, very good. All right, next, we go to declaration of candidacy for the spring election.
We have received a declaration of candidacy from Stacy Klein for the upcoming spring election.
All right, very good. All right, and then next, we go to consider approval of personnel report of new hires and resignations.
All right, we have some resignations. Katie Boutnik, girls soccer assistant coach. Andy Wees, boys and girls track coach. Jamie Wees, boys and girls track assistant coach. And Nate Coach, boys and girls track assistant coach. And we have two hirings. Kim Maney, paraprofessional, and Jerry Adamovich, softball head coach.
All right. I will seek motion approval of the personnel report.
I'll make a motion to approve the personnel report as presented. Second.
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Stacy. Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. Okay, next, we go to, and I jump to G, consider alternate prom 2023 location. Students? Principal?
I can start out, sure. You have in front of you a proposal from, that stems from our junior class, which of course is the class that hosts the prom every year. You will see the details of it in the document you have in your board site. Generally speaking, the idea came from the junior class, went to the advisors. Advisors fleshed out a little bit, brought it to me, along with a few of the student leaders of the class. Similar to last year, if you remember, we held prom off campus. Different venue, different site, but a similar request, and we're asking for board approval to host the event off campus. The spot they're looking to go to, and they've done some homework with the town. And it's really handy to have a junior class advisor that also works for the town in this summer gig. But, so a good connection there, but the town board has, I believe, done whatever they need to do on their end to give the green light for this event to occur down the street here, close to the water's edge, and I will now stop talking and let the students and staff that are here to talk about this. We have Jenna Erickson and Kai Zeus, who are both officers of the junior class, as well as Ms. Hermanson, who is a junior class advisor. So if you have any specific questions about the details... Prom, prom helper, I would... So if you have any specific questions of me or any of them, you guys are welcome to ask those at this point in time.
Well, I remember we had, was it two, three years ago, we had a prom outside in a tent? And I think, Ms. Hermanson, you were very instrumental in getting that one off the ground. And so is this a similar size tent that we had at that point?
Uh, they're going bigger.
Bigger.
Bigger and better.
Okay, all right. Okay, good. And I think everything went extremely well at that event where we had it outside in a tent and, yeah, so. I really didn't have any other further questions or comments. Anybody?
I should mention too that a plan B, if there is a terrible weather day, that it would be unsafe to be in the tent. We have plan B being in the facility right up the road here at school.
That was gonna be my question.
In the school?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Assuming that we'll get a certificate of insurance from the tent rental company?
We did.
Did already?
Yep.
Okay. As far as heaters go, are you planning on them? And is that coming from the tent rental also?
Yes, once it gets closer to the date, we're doing that through the tent company.
Okay.
Is there a dance floor provided with this tent?
Yes.
Has anybody thought about safety when prom is in a building? You have usually one entrance and exit. With the tent, is there one entrance and exit, or can you, is there multiple? No, it's just one? Okay.
On the safety issue, I should mention as well that this was also ran by our SRO, and ULPD will be there onsite, as they typically are for a prom.
All right. Any other questions? Terry, any to add at all?
No.
No? Okay.
I guess, I guess the last question, I mean, cost obviously is, is all, I mean, approved, taken into account, factored in, okay?
You guys don't know about your budget. The fundraising efforts have gone well.
Okay.
Yeah, so to be clear, this isn't coming from Fund Ten taxpayer generated dollars. This comes from junior class fundraising efforts, which will be real similar to the conversation we'll have in a minute with the student council.
Okay. All right. So prepare to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the prom site as stated.
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Josh. Last time for questions, anyone? Hearing none?
I do have one last question, just as a matter of, I guess, order of things. Have you already rented the tent company?
It's the same company that we used for the last prom that we had.
Okay, were you under contract? I mean, if we were to say, if we were to have said no, did you have a deposit down that you would have lost?
We did put some of them down, yes.
Okay, so just as a matter of, of...
It wasn't a default, it was like...
Well, just, just as a matter of course, I guess, in action and order, I guess I would just simply recommend possibly next time coming to us, come, you know, bringing the idea forward first before, just so you don't risk losing out on something that, in this case, finances. Welcome to adulthood.
Yeah, there you go. All right. I will call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four zero. There you go. You're set. Do we have a theme yet?
A night in Hollywood.
Ah, sweet.
See Snow Pants in Hollywood?
All right, so next, we go to H. This is one of those agenda items we bring forward here. Consider approval for student council overnight trip.
Yes, I'll get up and start that one or two. Along the similar vein, the student council presidents, of which two of the three of our student council presidents are here to talk about this tonight. This was brought forth to, and I know, and they could give me more detail on this, I know this was an idea that was brought up and discussed at several of their regular, they meet weekly. I will say that student council in general has a very positive vibe to it right now in terms of the numbers of kids, the cross-section of our student body that's represented in that room. When I go in there and peek my head in there, there's a pretty full room in the scroll classroom.
About thirty.
Thirty, which is really good participation.
Wow.
This is an idea that they came up with, they've been developing and then certainly talking about for a few months now. Advisors approve of it, came to me and had some questions, and we ironed some things out. And you see in front of you, because it's definitely made it past my desk, is something that I think is a viable idea. The funds utilized for this proposed trip, again, are all fundraised dollars. The student council carries around a lot of syruges chocolates throughout the year and spends a lot of their Friday nights around their concession stands at our events, which, again, has given them the financial flexibility to propose something like this. Because this is not something that would be coming out of, again, Fund Ten or taxpayer-generated dollars. So with that, they have a proposal out there for a team building and certainly a fun, exciting trip for our student council crew. They've done some work on finding dates that, as we all know, it's not easy to find dates that work that aren't in conflict with other school-related events. I know this is something they've had to work on a little bit over the last several weeks. So, that's what I have to say to introduce the topic, and we have Mrs. Kroll, Mr. Lake List, and Callie Volk, and Manny Poitier here to speak on behalf of this proposal.
I guess, do you guys have any initial questions? Otherwise, we can kinda get into the idea of our whole idea and trip. Okay, so basically, this has been an idea ever since I've been in student council, since my freshman year, that has kind of been tooled around with, but never actually generated a proposal and got it passed this far. So we basically just want to create some team-building opportunities and reward the student council members for all their hard work this year.
Yeah, so I know that, again, since my freshman year, we've always talked about a trip. It's never been sent to motion or anything like that. And me, Callie, and Ellie Lurdi, we all sat down and were like, you know, we wanna make this happen. We talked to Mr. Lake List and Mrs. Kroll about, you know, what, what would it take? And we did pick up volleyball concessions this year. We do most of the basketball game concessions, we sell syruges. You know, we really do try to be part of the community. We even bought microwaves this year just to, you know, we do try our best to...
Give back to where these funds have come from.
Yeah, so we would like to reward our students who have either put in all four years or are just starting this freshman, and try to bridge the gap between freshmen and like seniors and just make us more of a unit to be able to move forward and give them that to move forward once we leave.
Yeah, we just think it'd be a really cool opportunity to really bring the students together to support our cohesiveness.
Very good, yeah. So how many students, about thirty, are gonna go?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we are making a sort of requirement, quote unquote, of you have to contribute so-and-so number of concessions or contribute in this way or that way, so that we make sure that everyone is actually being involved in student council.
Excellent. Very good. Questions?
I have a question or a comment.
Perfect.
What I'm taking out of this is part of your, your main vision here is to really link between the upper fresh classmates and who are going to be moving on with the freshmen or those coming up. And so in your proposal, I talked about leadership, team-building skills. So I'm suspecting this is to really get that off the ground to keep the robust student council that it seems like you've got finally growing this year. I mean, I don't remember it being this big or this active, that you're looking at that as a major component. And of course, having fun, but I mean, that is a component of this too.
Yeah, for sure. One of the things that we talked about were renting houses down there. So we'd be, there'd be a girl's house and a guy's house, and we'd be able to, at night, play games and board games and stuff like that, where we'd all be able to build on that. Because I know personally, I try my best, obviously, to relate to the freshmen or the sophomores, but I'm not as close with them as I am with my senior girls. So being able to like, see them in a different way other than in the school environment, it would help a lot, I think, with communication, so that they'd feel more comfortable coming to us or opening their ideas at meetings. We just want them to feel more comfortable moving forward with everything.
Thanks for throwing that out there, that was actually kind of a question that I had.
So as far as, I guess, the overnight part, is that gonna be, actually be in like an RBO? Or is it gonna be in a hotel?
So we actually did look at a couple different options. We were looking at the hotel rooms at first, but the Wilderness does offer houses and condos that we would separate a girl's and a guy's house. So they're within that resort, but they, it was just a quick shuttle ride over to the water park and all the activities.
Okay, all right. So the, you are underneath their security umbrella kind of a thing?
Yep, yep, for sure.
Got it. Okay. Other questions?
And you guys will be really careful because the mother in me is like, you're leaving Three Lakes! We'll have supervision and adequate, okay, chaperones and such, okay, thank you.
I definitely admire the, the goal and the dedication to getting that done. It's, it's very neat that you guys are taking that advantage or that ability to take advantage of building the relationships with the, with the underclassmen, for sure. I guess, the question that I have is that, you know, the majority of, what is, what is the mission statement for student council? What is, what is the main goal? I guess it's, it's to increase the whole, the student, the perception of the student body, right?
Yeah, I don't know if we necessarily have a mission statement, but we definitely, we should. But our goal really is just to help build a better community and build a better student body and be able to represent the student body as a whole. So we plan homecoming events, we plan dances, yeah, and we just, we try our best to plan dress of days and events and stuff that give back to the students that they can look forward to. And then also do things around our communities such as food drives, we work blood drives, we do things like that.
Yeah, so I guess our main goal is to make sure that we are overall representing that student body properly and make sure that everyone's voices are getting heard and not just the people sitting in our room during our meetings. So just making sure that everyone is happy, and if there's any feedback, we make sure that we send out surveys throughout the schools and even to the teachers if they have any feedback that they would like to get to us. And it's always welcome and definitely considered during our meeting times. I guess, did that answer your question?
Yep, yep. I'd like to see where student council has gone since I've been in school. I don't remember much of anything, you know, any involvement, and, I mean, I know there's some, but it's, it's nice to see, for sure.
And the principal appreciates that every morning, the three presidents show up in his office and give you announcements, which is a good daily thing, but it's also, and they may not know this, but it's a good connect on a day-to-day basis from both, two ways to connect with student representation and administration on a pretty consistent basis.
Don't let this end with, with high school. Continue, continue on in the community afterwards. Definitely makes, it makes a difference, just as much difference as it makes here, it can make out in the community later.
Could I add one more thing? I would like, even though it will be a busy time, being May and a lot going on, part of our long-range goals are to be building that, that sense of student body and community. And I would like to meet with you and Mr. Zeus and some representatives of the student council because we have been seeking feedback also about what we can do to give you a better experience at school. And I think after you've had this time to team build and this really supports what we're looking for, should it pass, I mean, I'm presuming, I'm just saying, I would like that to be part of our feedback for future planning when we go forward and try to meet the needs of our school and community.
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
Very good, questions?
The chaperones that are going with you, are they staying with you in the house, or?
Yes.
Okay. They, they don't have separate rooms somewhere else? Okay.
Is the intention to make this an annual thing? Or is this something that, just if fundraisers and everything account for, that it, that it'll happen pending that success?
Yeah, so unfortunately, we can't guarantee that it will happen every year just due to the funds. But we would like, obviously, going forward, once we will not be here, we would like to see it happen more often than it does, just because we really think that it is a good opportunity for all of us to work together. Yeah, I think this year is kind of a trial year, maybe even paving, paving the way. I don't know if it would be every year, just because maybe it took four years for us to go, but I think like every other year, something like that. I think it'd definitely be up to the future students to decide what they'd like to do moving forward.
Yeah.
I'll make sure you pass that along, that, you know, you know, the results of hard work.
Any else, Stacy?
I'm good.
Josh?
I think I've said enough.
Michelle? Michelle?
Are you taking a bus ticket there? Or are you all driving separately?
Yeah, we have a bus drive. We have a bus that we-
We have it lined up.
Yes.
Pending approval.
Yes.
You are good.
We got one on standby.
Good answer. You're good? All right, perfect. All right. Anyone prepared to make a motion?
A motion to approve the trip as stated by the students.
I'll second.
All right. So, a motion by Stacy, second by Josh. Any other questions or comments? I'll call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none heard. Motion passes, four zero. Compliments to all of the student council members. This is a big deal. A lot of work went into this, and I think you've proven that you're doers. You can make things happen. And I think that's gonna be important as we go on in whatever we're gonna have, you know, comes up in front of us tomorrow or the next day or the day after that. Being able to get things done is important, and I compliment you on that. Good luck. It should be a lot of fun. All right. Now, we go back to D. Consider possible CDL course in collaboration with Carls Transport.
All right. Well, I can cover this one to the best of my ability. Mr. Cordula was planning on attending tonight, but I can share the information. So, I do know that in your board docs, there were two documents that were provided to you. One of them was the presentation, and the other document was a bulleted list of discussion points. Before we talk specifically about some of the information that was on there, we had an opportunity about a month ago. We took our tech ed department, forty-two students, and we went over to Carls Transport and had a phenomenal day. Students had a chance to ride a simulator where some of the Carls Transport folks could dial in the weather, animals crossing the road, when they were going through the city blocks. People would come out. So, they really got an opportunity to learn through the simulator how all the, you know, the weather and everything affected their driving skills. Then we had a chance to learn about the transportation and logistics industry as well. And actually, Tim Cordula went through that PowerPoint that I provided to you with all of his students. So, we had a chance to really learn a lot of the details of the industry. And then, kind of the culminating event was all of us, including myself, had a chance to drive a full-size semi around the training course. So, it was phenomenal to see, you know, all these kids learn stick shift for the first time, driving the eighteen-wheeler around the parking lot through the cones. And it was that exciting. And so, towards the end, as we were connecting with the students and having conversations, it was really intriguing to see, you know, we really don't have an opportunity right now built into our curriculum in any area for students to learn about, you know, CDL training, about the transportation logistics industry. So, there were a lot of questions that started to come out, just very inquisitive about, well, how can we get a CDL license? What's the pathway? What is the age level requirement for students to engage in that process? So, that conversation came up, and so, it started talking to Tim Cordula about it as far as what does Carls Transport offer? And how could there be potentially some sort of partnership between Three Lakes High School and Carls Transport? He had mentioned that he's reaching out to other schools as well to develop this partnership because of the critical shortage they're seeing in the transportation industry. So, as of right now, and he did mention that he is on the board, trying to change some of the legislation that would allow students to start when they're seventeen, start the program. But as of right now, students have to be eighteen years old before they can even start the theory, the theoretical portion of the classes, and of course, get behind the wheel. So, at this point, it's a little bit of a challenge. I think the biggest barrier is, you know, most of our students aren't turning eighteen until graduation or very close to graduation. And to start, you know, to start a program like this could be a challenge. However, for students, you know, we had four at the end of a field trip that were absolutely gung-ho, like this is something that they want to pursue. It was interesting to see, you know, how quickly four students who didn't really have a plan, post-secondary plan, right away, you know, kind of found their potential purpose for what they wanted to do after high school. So, I guess at this point in the conversation, until that legislation changes, that's out of our control. We don't know how the state's gonna react to that. But Tim Cordula was really pushing to try to move that age back to seventeen. At this point, I guess, looking at the potential to work with Carls Transport and figure out logistically what that would look like for our students to engage in the CDL program via Carls Transport when they turned eighteen. I do know that in conversation with him, he said at this point, students would have to travel down to Anago, to their Anago location, to take the classes. So, that would be, pardon that, unique scheduling situation that we would have to look at. But again, because of the eighteen-year-old minimum requirement, students would be close to graduation. This was part of their post-secondary path. Again, they would have, should have most of their graduation requirements done, and that would be something that we can look at logistically with their schedules. So, I guess, are there any questions based on that information? Again, without Tim Cordula here, he was looking forward to going through the whole slide deck and the whole presentation. If we would like to, you know, postpone that and look at having him do that at another time, we could, I could look at coordinating that with him.
So, there was pre-course work that would be available to our students prior to eighteen, correct?
He had said, no, they can't start. As of right now, they can't start it until they're eighteen.
They can't?
They're working the legislation right now that he's working on, and he's on a board to promote that. They're working on being able to start the coursework prior to eighteen.
Okay.
So, of course, I could inform the board if and when that changes. That would certainly change the course description, what we could offer students at your age.
So, the students that, you said you had four of them that were interested, what were their thoughts in, I guess, pursuing this?
So, I guess, to take a step back, it really opened my eyes in terms of, from the Helsin perspective, is that we don't have classes that really engage students in that, I guess, to understand the transportation logistic industry. So, after they learned more about it and they got the experience driving, it was like, this is something they could see themselves doing. So, we talked about the program, Tim Cordula talked about, you know, how Carls Transport offers the program. And that's kind of as far as we got in terms of how we could meet their needs while they're still in high school.
So, this would have to be a program that really, you know, new juniors would almost have to start thinking about in order for you to get their scheduling in line, right? Because like you say, I mean, they're gonna have their regular coursework to finish through the school. And if they have to wait till they're eighteen, I mean, they're really gonna have to kind of be ahead of the game on their classes, correct?
Correct. And I think the next step would be finding out from Carls Transport exactly how much time, what that schedule would look like. Is it two hours a day? Is it four hours a day? Obviously, taking into consideration the travel to Anago, especially during this time of year with potential inclement weather. So, those would be some things we'd have to look at. But I foresee it potentially as kind of like a school-to-work opportunity, where students might be here for the first two or three hours, finishing up their required courses to meet the graduation requirements, and then having that afternoon block to be able to travel down to do their coursework.
That'd be interesting to know, because I know that, you know, a lot of people that participate in the driving school, you know, it's an all-day thing. You show up in the morning, you know, it's all day. So, that'd be interesting to know if they have some variation there.
Could also be similar to, you know, students currently are, you know, students who are involved in internships, miss, could miss like a Monday and a Wednesday, depending on the partnership they have with business. So, it could be something like that, too. Teachers are very flexible. We talked about the individualized learning is one of our goals. That's something I think we could reach out. But I agree that that's, we have to get more details on that.
Are they doing this with any other school or is this the first?
There was a presentation in Crandon already, and they're looking at moving forward with it, but there hasn't happened any, you know, really focusing on that legislation, legislative change. Yeah. Tim is very optimistic about it. But again, because it hasn't happened yet, it's not a factor.
Right, right.
So, at this point, I'm not sure exactly how we'd be part of this. I mean, unless it changes. So, there's no part of this that the student can train for prior to being eighteen?
Correct. And that's the law. And that's Carls Transport's decision. That's absolutely law.
There are quite a few students that turn eighteen in the fall of their senior year. I have two.
Correct. It does happen, yes.
Just saying. I'm just stupid math.
So, for those that do, this would be that opportunity?
And this would be pertaining to the students who are eighteen. And the reason you're wanting to bring this forward, and what I understood with discussing with you and your conversations with Mr. Cordula was, so it would be in the course description or that we would have this, if not there, it would be set up so we would have that plan in place for next year?
Correct. And so, I would find out the logistics of what that schedule would look like, working with the student to find out graduation requirements and fitting it all pieces of the puzzle together to see if logistically it would work out.
I think that would be the important part, because, I mean, in his slide program, he says, you know, the rally's earn a CDL in six weeks. I mean, like you say, is that six straight weeks? You know, there's a lot to figure out there. I'm interested in the program myself, but I definitely need to hear more before we can do anything. In my mind.
Do we have any idea on where this legislation, this pursuit of legislation change is at?
They're at the discussion level, and Mr. Cordula is on the board, you mentioned, advocating for it. There's a number of other transportation businesses that are also pushing for it because of the critical shortage. He's optimistic, so there's no timeline.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, I guess, in my mind in terms of, you talked about school-to-work, how that would still all wash out. Six weeks of training is a pretty good block of time in a senior year. So, yeah, I guess, we could look at this again if Tim was available and he could answer some, maybe some more of these questions. Is that-
Absolutely.
So, he might bring more to the discussion as far as answering questions and such. And I appreciate you filling in for him. So, I guess, at this point here, we just table this agenda item?
Agreed.
So, table to another meeting that he can possibly attend, and I guess, we can probably get some more information. So, okay. So, sorry to make a motion that we just table this to a future date, and we'll wait for Terry and Mr. Cordula to synchronize the date.
A motion to table this topic until we can get more answers and have it put back on the agenda at a later date.
That was a second?
Second, yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor, the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes, four zero. All right. Thank you for your information, Ryan.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right. Consider building trades collaboration with Northland Pines for 2023 through 2024.
I think I can start with that. And then, if Justin wants to add anything, feel free. This was truly a generated idea from the staff, the staff members, our tech team here and at Northland Pines. And this kind of sparked out of that general common PD session we hit in October. And as they worked together, they decided that, you know, we're neighbors, maybe there are some things that even though we're unique and individual, we would like to start collaborating on. And their topic really turned to the building trades, because it's really difficult, as you know, we have barriers here for building a house. And yet, we have students who are really interested in going to that more advanced step. And so, Northland Pines, their teachers talked to our teachers. They brought it to Scott Foster, who then contacted Justin and I. And so, that's how this got rolling. And, you know, we've had a few meetings, and everybody is on board. What this would mean would be that for this first year, we would have it at Northland Pines. That's where this would take place. They have a partnership with Cornerstone Builders, and Cornerstone Builders are also saying yes. Welcome them in. Of course, they're hoping to generate future employees, too. What we would do this next year is it would be a collaboration. And Northland Pines has graciously said that as long as we provide the transportation and the teacher that would be working with the students, there wouldn't be a cost. So, even though we would have, you know, like a formal sixty-six oh three set up, we would go ahead and it would truly be a pilot. So, if we tried it, it didn't work, we're okay. We haven't committed any resources. We could have one student next year interested, or we could have five. I really like the idea that this is giving our kids an opportunity to step another foot into that career path. They would still be doing the prerequisite courses that they've been doing here, but this would be like an advanced-level course. And I think we have already talked about logistically how we could work it into the schedule. We've talked about when it's cold and jingles don't go down well, you know? So, there's been a lot of thought into this. But what we're seeking is the approval of the board tonight from Three Lakes. And then, Scott Foster will be taking it to his board next Monday night. And if both boards agree, we will go ahead and try this pilot program next year.
Justin, did you want to add anything?
We've pretty well covered the gist of it. It's just not a sustainable option for us to think about doing this on our own. It's not, I mean, even in places where there's twenty to thirty students who make it to the building trades capstone level course, level in the course sequence, those schools are having a hard time getting a structure built and completed in a school year. So, I see why Pines would welcome us in, because they probably need the extra hands, right? And it's certainly a good option for us, because we can offer, even if we only have two kids or three kids or five kids who make it to that level of the advanced building trades. And for gosh sakes, we all know how much in demand building trades skilled workers are in our local community. So, two thumbs up. If we can make it happen. And I was really pleasantly surprised with the price tag.
I was, too.
Is there a max number of kids that Northland Pines said, hey, we can only take eight? Or they'll take what they can get? Is their program kind of-
My understanding is-
Yes.
How does the, is it a block of time that they would work on this? Is it a couple of periods and back-to-back? How does that work?
So, I think they've had the conversation about early morning is not gonna be it.
Right.
It's gonna be an afternoon thing. It's going to be an afternoon thing. Um, and so Ryan, and Ryan and I would work on figuring out how we can do that, just like we do now for a kid who's leaving for work experience.
Sure.
We would structure the schedules, uh, with, with the same thing. But similar to a point that Mr. Cull made, like, the, the, these are students that we're going to be talking with sophomore and junior year because it's going to have to be, so, so that they have that academic space senior year. We have to get certain things done so that we have that flexibility with them. So it's not a conversation that starts in the September of their senior year. But given the increased numbers of kids in our, uh, tech ed classes over the last year, year and a half, we're, we're going to have some takers, there's no doubt.
All right.
Our insurance carrier doesn't have any issues?
Nope. We are okay.
As far as transportation back and forth, how would that work?
Well, I think we would plan, you know, like a school van, and then it would be my thought that our teacher would be the driver. So we would have the transportation there since he's accompanying them to do the actual building work and teaching.
So everybody would go and come back as a class?
Yes.
Okay.
We haven't, I haven't said it that formally, but that is the intent when I met with Justin before and when I met with our, our guys. Yes, that would be the plan.
Okay.
Supervised.
I hope that a couple of years from now, we're sitting here asking you for the money to buy a bigger van. Maybe sooner than a couple of years. I don't think we're in Philipus, but.
Nice fifteen passenger. Pending any more questions, I would make a motion to approve the building trades collaboration with Northland Pines.
Second.
This is just for one year, right?
We, this is for this year, yes. And then, of course, we want to, um, reevaluate, you know, we'd be talking to you before going further.
It's like a pilot test.
Mm-hmm. But with the idea that hopefully it'll go well and we will want to develop this program.
So do you want this motion for just this year?
Yes.
And then come back?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll re-edit my motion. I will make a motion to approve the building trades collaboration with Northland Pines for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Second.
All right, so a motion by Josh, second by Stacy, any other questions? All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye, opposed. None heard, motion passes four zero. And another good opportunity for students. All right. And. Next, we go to F. Consider course description changes for the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four school year.
Very good. Um, on this topic, uh, as you all know, when we get something new, we kind of bring it to you all along. Like we talked about EMT opportunities for our kids, we talked about transcript and credit options that our kids are going to be able to take. We have a couple more to talk about tonight, uh, in a couple, in two different departments. Uh, the timing of this is simply because, uh, as the agenda indicates, course description, uh, updates are being made right now. Real, real shortly here as, as this month wears out and we go into the next one. We're in the midst of scheduling season, uh, we want to obviously have everything all tied up for the course description book so that students and families can make educated decisions in conjunction with our guidance department as far as what the best course of actions, uh, action is. So that's the timing of having a couple of different departments here today. Uh, and, and as you know, throughout the year, as we get opportunities, we bring them forth to you for your approval, sometimes for your approval, right? Uh, one of those for sure today that I'm, I'm bringing to you will take your approval or action or, or disapproval or consideration for sure. Um, we've got three departments represented here today, uh, and I'll start the conversation and open up the floor of some of the professionals behind me. I'll start alphabetically, uh, business department. Uh, Mr. Busco is here to speak to any specific questions and certainly, uh, give, give us his, his opinions and, and expertise. But there's really three things with the business department that, that are of note that I want to bring forth. All, all of what I'm going to talk about is, is kind of detailed in the, in your, your documents on your board site. But I'll, I'll give you kind of a bullet point, sort of highlight things, um, that I want you to, to, to know about, certainly be apprised of and consider. The, the number one, um, ask, uh, or recommendation coming from the business department to me, Mr. Bach, uh, district admin, and now to you is we would like to add personal finance as a requirement for graduation at Three Lakes High School. If you would choose to approve that, uh, that would be something we would work in, like we've transitioned other things in. It's not something that, uh, happens tomorrow, it's something that the class of twenty-seven, is that what's in eighth grade right now? Did I do my math right there? Yes, the class of twenty-seven would have coming forward to, as they come into the, the high school, we would transition into this. But, um, recommending personal finance as a required course for a lot of reasons. I don't think anyone can argue that personal finance and the skills, uh, that you can, uh, grab a hold of from a course like that are useful for every, uh, human that graduates from a high school anywhere. The specific units are listed there in the, the documents, the, the unit plan that, uh, Mr. Busco would be following. For us locally, it would fit really well with what we currently have in terms of it would fit opposite of the semester-long required course we already have in place in child and parenting. Now you'd have a semester-long course, personal finance, that would make a really even schedule rather than having that little gap there, opposite of child and parenting. So it fits, uh, currently the way we, we are set up. Also, anytime you put something in as a requirement, certainly the, the downside may be, oh gee, is this taking away flexibility? Is this taking away options? Uh, it's not, uh, for us because we're already doing it on an independent basis. We could continue to do that individually if need be for scheduling. We, we have, uh, independent course right now, we have the RBA option, we can get it to kids if that particular semester, if a kid needs to be out of the building for building trades, uh, and, and can't jive with the hour that we offered or whatever. Uh, tho- those sort of situations we can take care of, uh, with an independent. So it's not going to encumber anyone's options down the line, uh, which is another reason why I, I fully would support this, uh, idea. Personal finance, uh, as a requirement, like I said, it just, it just makes sense from a standpoint of its skills that everybody needs. I would tell you that, and, and there is a list, Mr. Busco did a nice, uh, job putting together, and many of these I knew. Uh, now, now you know that, uh, local schools that are doing this already were not, uh, pioneers in any way, shape, or form on this regard. This is something that, um, a, a, a lot of schools are, are starting to write in as a requirement, for, for good reason, for obvious reason. So, um, that's one, uh, ask or, or recommendation in the business department. The other two are, are adding in elective courses, um, entrepreneurship, there's a list there, a unit plan, uh, in your, uh, materials for entrepreneurship, and then sports and entertainment, marketing, um, as another option, and those would, those would be electives, not obviously required. The unit plan is in there for you as well. Those are the three different things, I think, uh, obviously the most, uh, germane to your conversation is the graduation requirement one, and that would be the personal finance course. With that, I will open it up for any questions specifically that you may have. And, Mr. Busco, you're certainly welcome, thank you for being here, certainly welcome to add in anything from, from your perspective. And I do appreciate that, uh, Mr. Busco is very, uh, ambitious in getting us updated in, in a quick hurry here. We've talked in the past about some of the transcript and credit options, and he's, we've got a couple of teachers here tonight that are responsible for those. So appreciate that, really good.
Okay, um, I guess as a technical thing here, underneath the agenda item, course description changes. I don't know that we can actually make any motion or any action on adding a graduation requirement under, under that. That part, I don't see how we can do that.
Well, we could certainly bring it back in three weeks with the graduation component listed.
Because this is.
This isn't, this would be a change in the requirements, yep.
Um, we can definitely. Look in and consider the rest of it. So, does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, so, uh, we'll just have to bring back that graduation underneath its own agenda item. All right, questions on the balance of that?
As far as the fit you were talking about, Justin, there's not something already on the other side of that child and parenting, you know, just.
Students taking up whatever elective they choose.
They can find, sure, sure. I've had a lot of, I've had a number of parents, um, approach me and, and make the comment over the years, even prior to school board. You know, about, why isn't there personal finance, why, you know? So I think that this would definitely fit a, a desire for the community.
It was interesting, and I didn't, I didn't even share this with Mr. Busco, but it was a, a week or two after he had written up the, the first proposal to get the conversation started on this, to, to bring it to the table, to add it as a requirement. Uh, we had parent teacher conferences, and in that parent teacher conferences, just circulating around, three different sets of parents, you know, talking to me in the hallways, asking that same question.
Sure.
You know, it's in the works. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Yes, I can add, at this point, it is mandatory for students who are doing school to work to take that course already. So, and it's fairly, it's a fairly popular elective class as well, so a lot of students are engaged in taking that class.
Thanks, true, for saying that, because I'm sitting here going, Russell Cullum was supposed to be. I'm like, woo! My mind is blown tonight, so, so, thank you, Russell entered my brain, because I was like.
So is it the same curriculum?
Yes.
It is, okay. All right. Um, I got a question in terms of the marketing and entrepreneurship course. Just looking at. The items, um. I like the topics. Um, I do have a question, I guess, the, the sports and entertainment marketing. I guess we're, I guess, how does that fit in? I guess, what, what's the attraction, I guess, I guess, and just enlighten me, and I'm, I'm probably missing something.
Uh, yes, sir, so a lot of our students have an interest in sports and athletics. I think that's, uh, a given in our hallways across the number of students that are in three sports in this building, which is really great to see. I speak with a lot of students every day that don't realize that the Green Bay Packers, the Milwaukee Bucks, uh, maybe the Chicago Bears, if I might, or a little bit. A lot of our students don't know that those are organizations with hundreds of people in the background that run those organizations. So the conversation sparked around students having interest in sports and carrying that passion into a future career. We also have identified this course as a potential pathway for future marketing courses here at Three Lakes that could also be transcribed nickel A. So we view this as a stepping stone course, uh, to get freshmen through seniors interested in what the world of sports and business is. And then hopefully through that process, uh, expose them to additional courses within not only a marketing pathway, but an accounting pathway or, uh, additional pathways that that student might be interested in. So we view it as a gateway course to get students hooked, interested, and then hopefully they continue to take additional courses beyond that sports and entertainment marketing course. Uh, this is a course that Pines offers as well as Lakeland. Uh, previously where I've been, they've offered it, uh, and it's been very, very, uh, popular for students to take that course that maybe would not have taken a business or a marketing course if there's not that sports name in front of the course.
So it's a sports thing. Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm, and, and you can laugh at that, and that's, but I guess what I'm thinking at is, you know, again, in our, in our local community and that, we're, we're largely hospitality. And is there such a thing as, as, and maybe it's not going to be juicy enough for the students. Hospitality marketing. Um, I mean, that would serve, I guess, a lot of our constituents in our communities and stuff like that, but is that not going to?
That can kind of be wrapped into entertainment though, too.
Yes, sir, yes, that's a component of the, so the course is two-pronged, uh, focused a little bit on sports and then focused on entertainment, uh, hospitality, travel, and tourism.
Okay.
Students also get exposed to a hospitality unit in our introduction to business course. Uh, it's a week and a half, so it's not anything substantial. The students are being exposed to hospitality, travel, and tourism in a, uh, different business course through a unit.
Okay. So that entertainment is basically fairly broad.
Yes, sir.
It could definitely include hospitality.
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay. Good.
I was actually going to have a similar question as far as the, the specifics or the, the being really zoned in on the sports, but that makes sense as far as the interest is concerned.
Yeah. Okay, so how do you want to tackle this, Terry? Um, we got two departments. Do you want just a block motion to introduce these, uh, this course, uh, in the business department and in the social studies, which is basically a sequence change?
I don't know, I think maybe we should take the sequence change separately.
Okay.
Let's do the business and then do the social studies.
Okay.
Is that okay with you guys in the back and the principal? Okay. I think it's cleaner that way.
We'll take two separate motions underneath that agenda item. Okay, so, um, we're going to just continue the discussion underneath the business department. Any other questions on that added course offering? We could also include the personal finances and offering.
Yes.
And then come back with.
The graduation.
The graduation requirement, so we can do that as well, so.
There already is an offering, so we're going to have to.
So, okay. All right, so it only exists not just for students at school to work? Anybody can take it?
Yes.
Got it, okay.
The entrepreneurship, is that, I mean, has there been, have you gauged some interest on that? I mean, are there, does that seem like it's going to grab? I mean, personally to me, it seems, I'd take the sports and marketing first, but.
So the reasoning behind the entrepreneurship course is again, through our introduction to business course that is available to freshmen through seniors. We spend a, a unit talking about small business entrepreneurship, what it means to be an entrepreneur. And in the area we live in, we are surrounded by, uh, very entrepreneurial small business owners, many of which are looking for interns, uh, many of which are looking for additional help in the near future. I would also argue that our kids right now are probably the most entrepreneurial generation we've ever seen, uh, because of the cell phone, good and bad, right? Uh, so take that what you will, but this is a course where we would spend a semester going through the entire, uh, entrepreneurship process from idea creation all the way to a Shark Tank finale pitch that students would be doing. Um, again, a previous school that I was at, this was a very, very popular course taken by not just business students, but students who are interested in starting their own construction businesses. Uh, students who wanted to start a restaurant, a bar, uh, they wanted to have a boat rental service in the summer up here or a stowaway rental service in the winter. So we, again, are not just focused on a business student, but we're focusing on a student who is entrepreneurial in nature. And they might not know what that word means, but a lot of our students that walk these halls are very, very. and they might not know what that word means, but a lot of our students that walk these halls are very, very entrepreneurial. And so, the course would take them through that entire sequence, start to finish. So, we would discuss, and students would complete a complete business plan. We would go through the whole idea creation process, complete what's called a business model canvas, and then I have a lot of friends and folks up here that are small business owners that we would zoom in or go to their place of business to expose those students to those interests and just to get a little bit of insight into what the day in the life of a small business owner is. I took a group of 12 students in December to our local town, town businesses here in Three Lakes. We visited five different shops, and the students came away with a lot of great insights about what it means to be an entrepreneur, what it means to be a small business owner. And so, we can grab them, hook them, I think, through a formal class, the odds of them pursuing some sort of a side hustle or a full-time career as a small business owner, I think, would increase through a course that we are proposing tonight. Thank you.
Very good. All right, any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion to add that to our elective offerings?
I'll make a motion to add entrepreneurship and sports and entertainment marketing courses to our offers.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Stacy. Anything else in that regard? All right, a call to vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. All right, motion passes four to zero. And next, we can go to the social studies department recommending a sequence change for our courses.
Thank you. So, social studies, here's what, and this is a conversation that goes back to about March of last year. Started talking it through with the social studies department, and we're to the point where I need to make the recommendation. Here's, here's, the way it sits right now, students in ninth grade are required to take civics, okay? Then they have, in social studies world, there's world history, which is an elective course, and then you've got US history required junior year, and econ psych required for seniors. That's, that's the sequence right now. In essence, what we're looking to do is flip that a little bit and make our civics, turn our civics class into a 12th grade American government class. All right. I'm sure our social studies folks will, will and can go more in depth if you wish. The basic gist of it from my perspective is if you've ever sat in a ninth grade civics classroom, and I have, and compare that to sitting in and observing a 12th grade American government, or AP American government, or a political science course, way different experience, way more robust discussion, conversation, relevancy, because kids who are now seniors in high school and just about to the 18 or the 18, and being able to be voting members of our society, it's a little bit more of a, not a little bit more, a lot more relevant. I've seen both sides of this equation, both sides of the sequence, and I would wholeheartedly recommend that it's better for the class that focuses on government to be with older, more mature students, for sure. Okay? That's part of the impetus behind this. It also allows for us eighth grade, our students are getting US history in collaboration with our ninth grade, and this has sparked some great vertical conversations about which units and which eras of US history we're focusing on to make it a streamlined deal. That's good, too, right, for our kids. That's, that's the main, in my opinion, the main gist of what we're talking about in social studies tonight. Also, also, and this one, this one is a, yeah, for sure, we talked a little bit about transcripted credits earlier in earlier meetings, but offering a psych 2.0, which would be a more rigorous version of psych, that would be allowing, that would be allowing for transcripted credit through NICOL-A. We'd have, we're asking to put that into our course offerings for next school year. Also, somewhat of a change, but not a big change, in my opinion, is the 10th grade class for, the proposal is that the 10th grade class would be global studies, the elective that was world history, combining global studies and world history into one in the 10th grade as an elective. And certainly, Mrs. Hermanson and Mrs. Marvin can speak more specifically to the details on that. They've done a really nice job laying out the rationale in terms of the document you have in your board packet, but you have the living, breathing experts in social studies right behind us, so our high school social studies department, Ms. Hermanson and Mrs. Marvin are back there. If you'd like to ask any questions, I can-
This sounds like this is a better transition from junior high into the high school. Is one of the things that you're proposing here to make this be a better sequence. Is that where it started as far as that discussion, in terms of looking at that change of sequence?
I think with, kind of where it started is just teaching civics for as long as I have, and kind of seeing, you know, especially, especially say like in election years. And you have, and I cover it in both civics, obviously, but also with my econ kids, because they need to know it, too, because they are seniors. I see the seniors kind of light up more when you talk about that, because it applies to them. And the freshmen are like, okay, yep, okay, we need to know this, but that's so far away. And the seniors are like, oh, this is happening now, like, we need to understand this now. So, I just, I see it more as relevance, and I've been kind of thinking about it for a while, but I guess we just kind of, we kind of just kind of started talking about it a little bit, and talked to Justin and Ryan, and just see what their thoughts were, and I guess here we are.
And I should add that this, this sequence is really consistent with what you see, not that we always have to do what other schools do, don't get me wrong, but this is, this is a very typical sequence of, in the social study department. Said some pretty good classroom observations in PoliScire, American Government class for 12th graders, where, really good stuff. And if I didn't think that or see that, I wouldn't be recommending, or I wouldn't be stamping this as a good idea, but it's, it's a more powerful experience for the student, for sure, when it's relevant, or more relevant, I should say.
Will that eventually change anything that is done at the junior high level?
This doesn't necessarily dictate change at the junior high level. The only, the only thing that it's going to do is it's going to get a Mrs. Marvin or a Ms. Hermanson to sit down with a Mrs. Hibbert and say, okay, here's what we're doing currently at the junior high, here's what we're going to do in ninth grade. And not that they can't overlap some, but if you're going to go six miles deep on World War II in, say, the eighth grade, then we don't need to in the ninth grade, you know, and I like that sort of collaboration. And it probably won't be something that kids are going to be like, oh, I don't remember that, because it was last year, right? So, I kind of like that.
That would be very beneficial.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of history to learn. So, if you can, if you can roll one into the other, like you say, without having to overlap too much, that's, and they're only a year apart, so they shouldn't forget too much.
Right.
That's good. On the American government side, it's very interesting that you guys, the timing is very interesting. The WASB was just pushing a big change. They more wanted, they were making it more sound like a replacement or extra class to civics, which I did not agree with, but I like, I like this, because you are, you are taking civics and you're putting it on steroids. And, and like you say, when it's, when it's, to those kids who it applies to now, they are going to be way more willing to pay attention. So, it comes up for being, actually, I would say ahead of the curve on this one.
I would agree, Josh, and I think that's why you're hearing the frustration that has been expressed, that kids don't know government, that they don't understand civics. Well, if they're getting it as ninth graders, perhaps they haven't heard it the way they need to hear it. So, I applaud this change.
I have a question with the global studies. So, so the proposed change is a combination of global studies and world history, but down below, it just says that global studies would be a year, year-long course. Are you still going to have world history or not, I guess?
Well, the name would change to global studies, so it would be a year-long global studies course. And within that, we can still teach units that hit on some big world history aspects, whether it's ancient civilizations or revolutions. So, we would definitely still touch on that. We feel like, you know, the program here is really solid with history and a lot of the things that get covered in a world history course also get touched on in a lot of other courses that we offer, whereas we're kind of lacking in our department right now, geography, global, that type of perspective. We're kind of missing a whole set of DPI standards there. So, the goal was to bring in more of that topic, and we can absolutely still keep, you know, some world history themes in there as needed. And then we can also kind of, you know, we have a really cool wars class, you know, great Holocaust class, obviously, American Studies, where we can tie a lot of those concepts into those courses as well.
Personally, I would, I would like to see that continue, just because, yeah, a lot of it's, you know, you look at a lot of history worldwide, a lot of the events are similar. However, outcomes and whatnot are different, so that, personally, I would like to see that continued, so.
In a mirror to what Mr. Zeus said, I would say that most schools around us offer a global studies. That's a requirement in many of the schools surrounding us, so just, again, not that we have to be in line with other schools, but it is pretty common sophomore requirement.
Just more of an evolution, a lot of change.
And I can say from student services perspective, when students come in or go out, and I set up a transcript, or they took one semester, and they come here in semester. It's nice when we offer similarities to some of our neighbors.
Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed sequence change and addition of the courses as presented.
Second.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll call to a vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes four to zero. Thank you for all your work in both endeavors. And, yeah, look forward to the changes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, next, we go to, I consider hiring the Nexus Solutions for Development of the Three Lakes School District Facilities Long Range Plan.
All right, I didn't include anything in your packet, because I didn't have a presentation to include. If you recall, in June of this past summer, we had presentations from FEH, or I thought it was FAE, but they go by FEH, and by Nexus Solutions. They were the two that had responded to our request for interest in doing a long-range plan. And after consideration, I think that we decided with the upcoming referendum, it was probably best to get that behind us and make sure that, you know, we had that in place before we were committing to something of an undertaking. The need has not gone away. We have a true need to have a long-range plan for facilities, and not just facilities like one year, five year, 10 years out, but to actually have a schedule and look at the costs of the different projects, and really have a cycle, a document that we are referring to as a living document, and that helps shape what we're doing, rather than saying, you know, this is really getting pretty worn now, or we've got to think about this. Let's really get that in place. I believe that after we had gone through the materials presented, we had a very strong feeling, I will let you have the discussion, about who we felt had the best interest in mind for Three Lakes School District, and that was Nexus by the work they had done preliminarily, and by the options that they had given us. Everything from consultation to, they could plan, you know, contracting vendors, et cetera, to they would make the plan and walk away, and there would be a cost at that time, you know, six months ago, it was $7,500 to have these plans in hand. Before I can go forward, I need to have your approval to go ahead and start getting this rolling, because I think many of the decisions, even one tonight that we're looking at, are tied closely to our future with our facility plan.
Do we have a contract that we can?
I do not.
Okay.
I do not have a contract.
Okay.
I would have to enter into that.
Costs?
$7,500 for the plans, if we'd go just with the plans, which could have gone up in the last six months. I would go ahead and talk to Rob Brown, our consultant that's been working with us, and, you know, I can bring back to you what the costs would be, but I feel that I have to have your approval to get this going.
Okay.
The contract that was shared originally would be out of date.
Okay. So, we could do a conceptual approval, because we don't have a contract in front of us at this point. Or we could just bring it next month's agenda. With, I guess, a proposed contract, I guess, from Nexus. Anybody have any suggestions on how they would like to look at that?
I would agree, just to pursue, just to talk with Rob and work on getting that to bring forward to the next meeting.
Very good.
I agree Nexus was, they were, they were interested. I mean, they actually, they, they came here, they cared, they, they've even reached out a time or two since. I know when we passed our referendum, they just said, hey, congratulations, we're still here for you. It wasn't the one and done thing.
All right, so if he could bring that contract forward to us for the next month's agenda. I guess right now, we'll just take a motion to table this to February.
I'll make the motion to table the Nexus till the February meeting, once we have a contract.
Second.
All right, any other questions on that regard? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? None heard. Motion passes. Aye, opposed, none heard, motion passes four zero. All right, next, consider bids for track improvements and repair.
Okay, this is something that has come up a couple of different times, um, that we have been discussing again within our planning of maintenance and repairs. Um, the track condition, as though we've been told it's in very good condition. It is starting to show its, its age. Um, Charlie started getting bids or was seeking bids last year, last spring, early summer, and, um, again, now he was able to get that update, updated this fall. And that's what you have for you to look at. Tonight, I think it's really important that you have the discussion to see what the costs are that are tied to, uh, track improvement. And also with that in mind, um, he can talk to you about the different contracts because they're, they're not exactly alike. The costs are similar, but the materials and such that we're talking about are different. So I open that up to you for your thoughts, your discussion, and your, um, guidance on where to go with these bids.
Okay. Um, first of all, do we have a recommendation of the three bids here?
Well, I guess from looking at the three bids, um, and, um, Fish, the Fisher tracks, that's the installer that did our track that's currently here. It has served us very well. I believe the track was put in the same year as the high school. And to my knowledge, there hasn't been any maintenance to it. There's never been a maintenance code, it's never been repainted, it's, well, I should say. It has been repainted by the WISs and some of the track athletes in other's time. Um, it has never been striped, but they repainted the, uh, exchange zones, the numbers, you know, the simple stuff. They didn't go around a quarter mile in a brush and do the lines. A lot of people that come and look at our track are like, wow, this thing is in really good shape for as old as it is. Um, I feel that the product that was put down the first time was done by a very reputable company and serviced as well. That is also the only bid that is a polyurethane track. So the difference of the two bids is a latex track or a poly track. So eighty percent of people that are putting tracks in now are putting polyurethane tracks in. There, from whatever thing I read, I've got some articles that I can give to you guys, um, so you can read up on it yourself. Latex tracks are the old way. The polyurethane tracks are the new way. Um, they talk about better, better wear resistant in cold temperatures. Part of our problem with our track is the surface has kind of deteriorated and the rubber over time gets really hard. I mean, it's like an old tire. It's, it gets like a rock. It loses its elasticity, um, from the elements. Um, the polyurethane tracks are able to hold that much longer. Now, are we going to get twenty-five years on a polyurethane track? I don't know, but everybody tells me that, um, believe it or not, that we're better off up here with it freezing and the frost slowly coming out, whereas in central Wisconsin, they get those fluctuations in temperature consistently. And that's why, you know, it freezes and thaws and freezes and thaws multiple times, and, um, the, the cracks get a little bit worse. Um, also on the bids, uh, Fisher got in touch with, uh, Pitlick and Wick. There is going to be some asphalt that is going to be, to be, uh, replaced. There are some pretty sizable cracks, um, on the backside. Um, there's a, it's a seam crack basically draped down like lane five in the middle of the track. That's some distance. And there are also some horizontal cracks going across where, um, the lights went in and it had been trenched. And so they're thinking that that stuff needs to be kind of taken care of or those will come back. Speaking with Brad Pitlick a little bit, he said they just did lactoflammos, uh, not too long ago, and he said they did some milling. They didn't mill it completely down. They just milled like two inches and then came back and resurfaced. And, um, he said that, that's something that they would recommend. I've worked with Jeff Anderson a little bit about this, um, as well. The other two bids do not have, reflect that price in there at all, but that is work that would have to be done with that as well. So, um, the bid from, I believe it's Athletic Services and, um, Athletic Service Construction and Visit American Systems do not reflect any of that additional asphalt work that would need to be done on the track uh, prior to putting it down. So I don't know if, I'll bring you guys these articles up. You can kind of make yourself a little professional like I have in the last few days. Learned a lot about it, but yeah, they say the, the polyethylene tracks are the eighty percent tracks. Now, there's different varieties and grades of that. Some are like they talk about Olympic level. I don't think we need to put something in like that. I think, uh, these are three articles that I found that were pretty good. When I did a little research on it.
So just to be clear on the Fisher track bid here, that does not include any asphalt work?
It does. Fisher is the one that does.
It's, I think it's, it's the additional.
It's the additional.
There's a twenty thousand and a half on page two.
On the back page, yeah. And then-
So if you include that, so, but the, the base bid says does not include any. So.
If you were to do the, the surface, the removing existing and the repair, you'd be looking at like one ninety-five.
Now, there's also a deduction on there on the backside of the Fisher track. So our track is, it's not like most tracks, and I'm not quite sure why it was built and designed the way it is. But it actually has, um, chutes on both sides where you could run sprints on both sides. Like you can run the hundred and the hurdles and that kind of stuff. We really never used those backside, so they talk about there's some runoff areas and things like that where you wouldn't necessarily need to put down this track material and, and spend any maintenance on that. In the seven years that I've been here, it's, it's never really used. I mean, it would be fine with just doing, you know, grass over there or something like that. So that's the deduct on the Fisher tracks.
Okay.
Um, the other ones are the latex, basically, they come through and they spray thin layers of latex until they get it built up to, it's about a three eighths of an inch is what all the track surfaces are now. So. But those are, those are the three options that I was able to come up with, um, just like everyone else. Uh, they were very strapped with labor and some of the people that were normally in the office were out in the field doing some of this stuff. And they were very difficult to get ahold of. So it was, uh, in fact, one company hasn't really gotten back to me at all yet. And that's one that we got a bid from, I think Dave Kirby had a bid from them, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, and they never really got back to us. But in the documentation and some of the articles, they talk about, you know, latex being the old way to build the track and the polys, the, the new way for durability and lasting and stuff like that.
Is the track we have now considered a latex track?
Yes, yep. And that's the way all tracks were then.
Sure, sure. But it lasted this long.
Yeah, yeah, it has, yeah.
So in terms of budgeting, Terry, on this, what are your thoughts?
Well, I have a, a few thoughts. Um, this is a very big ticket item. I'm not saying it's not important, it is important. But it has been looked at, you know, for several years. We know it's been coming. Um, one concern I have is if we're doing our facilities assessment, if we would determine that we're going to do something differently with our football and soccer field, that whether it be a re-sodding or a irrigation system, I mean, I'm not saying that would happen, but that's what I'm thinking about. I'd be concerned about putting the new track down first before we have that planned. Now, I am the novice. I, I don't know where, at end of life, our track situation is. But I have asked Charlie to follow up on this and he is great. It's taken several months to get responses because we need to know what kind of money we are talking about with something of this nature. And, um, I know we can, we have pride in our facilities, both indoor and outdoor. We want to do it the correct way. Um, I want to do this right. So that, that's where I'm at. I think that you have a lot to look at here with this additional information. And even with the bids that we have, I'm quite certain they will have to be updated somewhat because most bids are thirty days and then, you know, you would renew them.
So basically, we're looking, considering, I guess, to have a, a renewal of the, of the track surface. This would be done sometime over the course of the summer?
If it, yeah, that's the only time we, you know. It would need to be started probably in June and, um, it would be, need to be completed by our first football game, basically. Um, because that's a facility that gets used up there in the fall a bit. Um, they're, they're telling me that-
Really before practice even starts?
Well, they really don't practice on it. They, you know, that's kind of, you know, practice on that field until later on.
They're still, they're still for themselves.
Yeah. Um, I will tell you that there has been an uptick in injuries in our athletes as far as shin splits and things like that. And we're actually even having spikes. I mean, track shoes are like really super thin. And they're driving the spikes through the soles of the shoes. It's so hard. So it's, the, the track is at slips. I mean, it's, it needs to be, now, whether it's, you know, this year, next year, but it's, it's finished. And there's no elasticity, there's no bounce, there's no giving anymore.
Okay, so it needs to be done sometime between June and August, basically?
Basically, yeah. And that's when they do all of them, you know, um.
And I would imagine they're probably filling up their-
They're probably filling up their schedules, yeah.
Yeah. So I just wonder if we have an option, if we wanted to do something this year, we're not going to get probably a facilities planned by-
I'd be concerned that they aren't already full. And with having labor shortages and stuff, I think we're really pushing to, by the time we get a re-quote, get a schedule, get it scheduled, or get it approved, get it scheduled, I, I just think we're, I think we're pushing too hard for this year.
Do we, do, do we have available time slots for this summer, when this last conversation?
When I last talked to them, they all said that they were available. I haven't talked to them now in, you know, a month or so.
Are these bids current?
Well, no, the one is the fifteenth. Um, the one is the fifteenth. The rest of them, you know, said they were current bids, but.
So Fisher one was done in November.
Yeah, it was done before that. He came up from Iowa.
Yeah.
But the, the, yeah, the, the end date on the bid was the fifteenth though. Terry said they kind of usually will extend those out for a while.
If they want your business, they will.
Okay. So if, if we were to consider the Fisher proposal, spending just for the poly, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars run numbers, doesn't make any sense, um, to not, I mean, would you recommend considering also the re-milling if you're going to go spending a hundred and fifty-seven thousand?
With, with all the bids, I would definitely, the areas of concern, which they've got kind of mapped out and measured, I would definitely, because those cracks, I mean, it'd be like putting a piece of paper over a crack. Eventually, it's gonna, you, we need to address those cracks. Otherwise, you're gonna rip your track on top.
Okay.
You know, um-
If you're spending a hundred and fifty-seven on, on this, just the surface, you want to make sure that the base-
The base has got to be good. I agree.
And I, and that's one thing everybody, when they, they looked at the, like, your, your base course here, it was definitely-
Yeah.
I mean, to, to have the few cracks that we have, um, in twenty-five years is, they're like, this is pretty nice. So I think rather than going through and re-milling the whole thing and putting new asphalt down, which really brings the, the expense up. I think we've got a pretty good base there.
So what exactly are we getting? It says six hundred and forty feet of full mill, full depth mill and pave crack repair. What, what exact-
It's basically the east side of the track. There's a long seam crack on the backside. And then there's also two cracks that go horizontally to the light poles where the electricity was buried.
Okay.
Um, there's one, there's one, um, right next to the gates as you come in, entering the football field where they usually swing those gates up, there's that light pole there. There's one there that's going to need to be addressed as well.
Okay.
I wouldn't say that those, that those cracks aren't going to reappear.
Well, right, anytime you-
Because, because what happened is they, if you don't bury, I, I think what I've been told is if anything goes under blacktop, if it's not up here, if it's not two feet deep, you're, it's gonna crack there.
Well, I, I think it's deeper than that, Josh.
That, well, I, well-
But they're, what they're saying is it's, it's not a conduit, so that the electricity that runs through there has vibrations in the, in the cable, and that's what has, has kind of caused that. Because Dave seemed to think that that was much deeper than that.
And what are your thoughts on the not surfacing, the east starting or finish shoots?
Um, you know, I don't see an issue with not doing it. Like I said, it is-
Only thing is, is that for some of the shorter sprints, some of the runners run.
Well, they, but it's on the far side.
That's what I figured, Josh.
Yeah, I mean, but they don't, all the sprints finish, they finish, so, I mean, there's, I, I really don't know why it was built that way, you know, um, if, unless they were planning on, you know, like collegiate stuff where you're doing stuff on both sides or whatever, but, I mean, it's a full track. It's not a track you see at a normal high school. I mean, you, you go to Ryland or you go to Tomahawk, you go to Antigone, they don't have that.
So is it, uh, a potential issue if we didn't do that in terms of, I mean, because you're definitely going to have a surface thickness difference?
Yeah, I think, um, I would have to talk to Darren and find out what his thoughts were or whether they would just, I think what they would probably do is just strip off the latex in those areas and leave that stuff on there. Because it wouldn't make any sense to strip it off. That'd be extra labor for them. They wouldn't cut it out, you know, and pull it up. Why would you do that? You're, you're, you're risking the integrity of the edge of your asphalt. I'm thinking that they would just leave them and not touch them. So they would go around with their striping machine and when they laid it down, you know, they would probably give themselves a, a foot to six inches where they would just leave that and it wouldn't flush up against it. Or, or they would, you know, granted, I should say, if we're bringing three eighths on top of this, they'd have to taper it to bring it in. So I don't think we're losing it. We would just, it would be new. So it's not something we're- So it's not something we're losing.
Okay. And you don't see it as a potential hazard, I guess, if we didn't?
That, that stuff gets walked on. It really doesn't get ran on. It doesn't get trained on. It's, you know, it's a bigger area where it's, you know, not grass or whatever, but it's-
To Terry's point, I've, I've got a similar concern if we go and do this before we possibly address the football slash soccer field. That gets more use. So does something, you know, as far as timing goes. Hate to get this done and then have to, and then if we decide to do something. I'm not saying resettling is the issue, but as far as water and fertilize and recede and that could, that needs some work too. That takes, that takes a beating.
In your opinion, that would be done before?
It, it depends on what, what really needs to get done, I guess. I mean, if it's a matter of, you know, them dragging a hose over a new track, well, that's, you know, for a sprinkler, that's not a big deal. But if you're driving on, you know, some sort of a hydro seeder and, I don't know, it depends on the process.
Yeah. Okay. Either way, nothing's gonna happen before this track season.
Oh, correct, yes, no.
As soon as we would have a facility plan, long range plan is going to be probably into summer, I would assume.
I think that's probably a pretty good timeline.
Okay. So the question is, is do we do something this year? This summer, or do we just wait till the following summer is basically what it would, what it boils down to? My thought on, on the big picture thing is this isn't something we've got budgeted in for this year. Although if we had it done in July or August, it would fall into the next year. So I guess, but I, it's definitely something I would like to see budgeted in. Well, uh, someone prepared to make a motion as far as, I guess we have two, two options in front of us. One, we approve one of the bids or we wait until we have a facility plan in front of us. Is there any other options to consider?
Not sure we necessarily have to say we're waiting for the facility plan. You know, that's just where we're at. And I think the bigger thing is, is do we, do we rush it for this year or do we, or, or do we shoot for twenty-four? Either way, same result. You know, and then that's, if we did, if we did incorporate it in the facility plan, something we could, you know, specifically tell Rob. You know, this is, this is something that we need to address sooner than later.
And if you don't make a motion on this, it just, that's where we're at. You've had discussion.
Okay, so then we can just table it to a later date, I guess, on the date. And basically-
You can, or you can ask if anyone wants to make a motion as it's presented and if no one does. Or we can make it a table.
Correct.
Either way, whoever you want it best, we'll lock it in the minutes.
Yeah. Cause the, I guess the reason I'm hearing is we want to see basically if we're going to be doing any work in that area. Which I would assume would be coming out of discussions through, I guess, the long range plan and when we address the facility needs. So we just table this to a later date?
It's a big, that's a big dollar figure. To, I, I would like to know how that would work into your numbers, I guess, a little bit better personally. I'll make a motion to table to a later date.
Second.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Aye. Opposed, none heard. We will talk about this again. So, thank you for all the work you've done in this here, Charlie, and we'll be back on this. All right, consider approval of the track co-op with Phelps for twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-four through twenty-twenty-five.
And this would be a renewal and the contract is there. So it would be continuing as we have. Charlie, did you want to add anything to that?
Basically, I, you're just keeping things the way they happen. For boys and girls, I think it's, it's two separate co-ops, boys and girls, but I think it's the engine as a one.
And we've had some participation on Phelps' part and-
We have. Not, not tremendous amounts, but it, it helps.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the track co-op with Phelps for twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any other further questions? Hearing none, I'll call it to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Motion passes four zero. Uh, moving on to consider approval of the golf co-op with Phelps for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four and twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five.
Again, this would be a renewal for the upcoming two years as has been presented here. Charlie, do we have participants?
Same thing, yeah, yeah. Basically, it's the way it's been now for a number of years and, uh, we, I don't think we had anybody last year for Phelps. We had two junior high, two junior high kids. But we're, yeah, this is W P M. So two junior high kids. So there's some kids coming up.
Potential.
Nobody in high school, I'll put it out. But it's a co-op that doesn't hurt us.
I'll make a motion to approve the golf co-op with Phelps for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five.
Second.
All right, motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any other questions? Call to vote. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Motion passes four zero. Next, going to consider approval of board vacancy policy one thirty-three, formerly sixteen forty.
This would be the second reading. We visited it last month and, um, the updates, I made a couple of notes. There was just a few changes that we did make. Uh, there was language that was added. Specifying that within the state statute. So I just lost that. So I'm gonna look at my hard copy. That was a change. And then we wanted to make sure that we updated our, um, adoption date, which, um, Terry had pointed out. So that would be tonight's adoption date if we would go through with that. And then there was a grammatical or a spelling error. I capitalized the T that was, was missing. So you've already read through this, but this is our opportunity to talk again, that this would be our formal policy. And the reason we wanted to go this way was because it very much clarifies what we do if and when. Instead of having to face that situation as, um, different vacancies may arise. So would you have any questions about the policy as shared with you?
I had one, um, I guess just looking for an example of the situation and maybe this is just, we just need to change the language. But, um, for actually right away, page one, uh, filling in board vacancy number one. Where it says the board clerk or designee, uh, shall promptly notify all remaining board members of each school board vacancy that occurs for any reason other than due to a resignation or court judgment. Why wouldn't the board clerk or designee have to notify anyways in either of those cases?
I think you would have to unless I didn't address that with Scott when we talked about this.
I had a similar question on that. I, I think you could just truncate that sentence.
Okay.
Just the board clerk or designee shall promptly notify all remaining board members of each school board vacancy.
Period. That occurs?
Yeah. It just, I don't think any reason should make a difference.
Right.
It just, it-
And I think we all would believe that the designee would be myself as district administrator. You'd expect me to make that. That's how I'm understanding it. It could be the clerk too, but we could discuss together.
Yeah, it refers to the treasurer as a designee as, as, as an option as well.
Mm-hmm. So we take that portion of the sentence out?
Other than the T that I saw also, I didn't have any other questions.
Okay.
Number three on page one. During the initial sixty-day period of vacancy, the board may fill the vacancy only by an appointment that is made by a vote of the remaining members of the board. I'm struggling with that one.
The word appointment.
Why is it just, you know, I guess the question is, why is it just during the initial sixty-day period? Cause the other option is, is the, the forty-five later. That's still gonna be filled by an appointment. So it's-
Did you just say the, during the period of vacancy?
I was wondering if that, we just eliminate that whole thing, whole thing. Cause it doesn't really tell me anything newer.
Right, the rest of the, the rest of the policy describes that.
It states it, right. Unless I'm missing something on that, but I-
No, I'd agree, cause you look at the next line, it says procedure to fill a vacancy during the initial sixty day.
Right.
I agree.
Policies can get very wordy. If it doesn't, if it's not pertinent to us, then we should take it all-
Don't overcomplicate it.
Yeah.
Okay. Eliminate number three.
That was the only questions I had on it. Stacy, any others? No? Josh, anymore? Michelle?
No.
Someone prepared to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the board vacancy policy number one thirty-three, formerly sixteen forty, as presented with the changes.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Michelle, second by Josh. Last call. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Motion passes four zero. There you go, Terry.
Thank you much. One of many to come.
Yeah. Okay, exactly. All right, consider designating the number of regular education and special education spaces available for open enrollment applications for the twenty-twenty-three through twenty-twenty-four school year.
I did include in your board document that outlines, um, our situation. I had met with administration and with Kerry Volk, our director of special education and pupil services. And, um, then with our principals as well. And we have determined our space allocations. This is something we must do by law every January. So I have two recommendations here for you. The first regarding regular education, we will be able to continue to accept regular education, open enrollment applications as we do have space within our regular education program. The second piece of this is we also have to look at our special education, um, enrollment and the services that we offer. We, as you know, do have a higher percentage of special education students with our district. We're still at around the twenty percent, I believe. Which is considerably higher than the rest of the state. Which is a good thing because we know people appreciate the programming that's being done and the services that are being provided. However, those are very sometimes in more intensive programming needs and we have to look at our staffing and student to staff rationale. And at this time, because we don't want to choose to separate each specific category out, which would take some policy work. We don't believe that we could meet the needs of special education, open enrolled in. Something that is a little bit of a caveat here, you know, there's always the exceptions that we can go ahead and review a request. If we already have a student who is part of the district, if there's a sibling consideration, we would look at that closely and see exactly what that would mean and share that information. But as a rule, we would say we are not accepting open enrollment special education students for the upcoming year.
Kerry, did I miss anything that I should-
Unless there are questions specifically to that.
Are there any other exceptions? I mean, I, I definitely understand the sibling thing. Are there any others that we need to be aware of or?
Um, that I think is the, the major one.
Yeah, that's the main one too. With this, we still have to review I E Ps as they come, but you know, this is what we're recommending at this point.
It's a situation that I could potentially see as if we already had a student that was open enrolled or two. And sometimes you might, and it's rare, but you might have a early childhood or a four K student that might have like a speech identification. We wouldn't want to say, well, that child wouldn't be eligible. We would want to look at that on that individual basis.
Sure.
All right. Someone prepared to make a motion.
So do we make two motions here?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make the, I just, I'll make them, oh, go ahead, Stacy.
I'll make a motion to accept non-resident, open enrolled, regular education student applications for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. Provided they meet the established district criteria as there is adequate space in the current program.
Second.
All right, motion by Stacy, second by Michelle. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none heard. Motion passes four zero.
I'll make the motion to not accept resident- I'll make the motion to not accept resident, non, I'm sorry, I'll make the motion to not accept non-resident, open enrolled, special education student applications for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year, as there is not adequate space available in the current program.
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Michelle. Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
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 Opposed. None heard, motion passes four zero. There we go, we're set. Next, we go to facility improvements slash summer maintenance projects at the Sugar Camp School report.
Okay, now, this is just briefly for your information. This isn't looking at doing any major projects at this point, but a couple of things that I just wanted to bring back to your attention. The sign out front has, we need to replace some wood. We want to keep that same traditional look, because it is a picture photo op that people enjoy. So we'll work on that. I don't know if you recall, but our window replacements that we ordered last year, when they arrived, they were not built correctly. So we've done some work to get those replaced at no cost to us. Jack did a really good job with Todd, working through this with me, and those are just ready to go when weather permits, so that will be coming. There will be no cost to the district. Probably the biggest one I wanted to point out to you is, if you recall during our tour, we talked about the discovery of that septic tank that was in that location, and found that it was a metal septic tank, and those are now, they're considering that to be a potential hazard. So I did get a couple of quotes, Jack worked on that, and we're looking at between seven and eight thousand dollars to replace that septic tank. We can go one of two ways. I just am bringing to your information now. We can wait for our long range plan and say, are we actually looking at some type of addition, where we change the location or not? But it is something I didn't want to bring to you as a potential concern, and then just not address it. So it's still on the the front burner, if you will. I do understand that it wouldn't be a real labor intensive job. It would be maybe a day or two to do something like this. And I do want to make another follow-up phone call with Oneida County, just to find out, you know, what the true urgency would be with this replacement. I do have some money budgeted. I've asked Todd and talked to Steve just a little bit about it. It really came to to front and center, in my opinion, that we do need to have a piece of playground equipment for our littler kids, like our three, four, five-year-olds. When you look at their bodies, what we have is actually pretty big. And now that we've really invested in our four K stock, and we want to keep growing that, I think we need to. And I'm looking to at both buildings. I'll bring a former, former, formal proposal to you, but I think that we're looking at about a ten thousand dollar purchase at each building site for our little ones. The LED bulbs are just about finished. I am asking that we put new bathroom dividers in by the bathroom office, just to spruce it up. Those are old, they're kind of out of whack, and they don't close very well anymore. We're going to do some painting with the rooms, the door frames, the staining of the doors. And then another area, which is going to be a little bit bigger of a cost, but we have to look at getting some kind of cubby system for the four KK area, because they just have the hooks. So we need, we know this is coming. And also looking at our lockers down the other hallway. Todd did some initial measuring and such with that, and we know lockers are pretty pricey. But if you've ever looked at a sugar camp locker, what are they, seven, six or seven inches wide? You can't even put your boots next to each other. It's just, and so people complain, yeah. And so that does need to be updated, so I am looking at that. Todd, would you like to add anything?
We had talked about doing the front entry with tile, but then again, it's kind of a part of the long range. If you're going to do something there with the central commons, we talked about the safety of being able to see the door from the secretary's office. So that's kind of all up in the air, too, with that. That's pretty much it. Covers a lot of it that we had discussed.
Right. So that was just mostly for your information. Keep you in the loop, and next month I'm going to ask Dave to join us, and he's going to share what we're doing in Three Lakes.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Just as a quick question, I know you talked about like the cubby system in Sugar Camp. Is what's, is it the same situation in Three Lakes, basically?
They have lockers, and they have actually in the room, some cubbies system too. Steve, did I say that right?
Yes, I would say, if we end up with more than one again, we would look at different locations and potentially make a couple of changes.
Sure.
Depending on where those other rooms would be.
Okay.
Because this year it was, whatever, three days before school starts.
But their lockers are bigger, and that seems to work much better.
Sure. The one room in the main hallway has lockers, the other one does not.
Okay.
They just have cubbies in there that Dave quickly put in for them, so.
And they both work.
I wouldn't really intend to use that smaller room again if we were in that same building, had some forewarning.
Kind of along with the cubbies go to is that I think there's, there's roughly forty lockers in that kindergarten in the four K hallway. With the numbers, we're kind of expecting to be in kindergarten next year around the twenties somewhere. And again, not knowing what's coming in four K, it would just be nice to have everyone's face. So we're not just looking at just four K cubbies, but it would be probably not.
That whole hall.
And at that age, it's just...
Enough said.
You've got one of those for you.
Trying to even open up a locker for a four K is difficult. So having them open and visible and...
Sure. They're about the only kids that are small enough that could still fit in a locker.
Especially those, yeah.
All right, so if anybody has any more input on that, you can contact Terry on that, so. Okay, next. WASB State Education Convention recap. Who's going to start?
I'll start, I guess. My biggest takeaway from the, from the convention was that, and kudos to everybody here from, from Terry all the way down through administration and staff. I really think that we are doing a, an excellent job at, at putting kids first, giving them opportunities, and, and being with or ahead of the curve on, on many, many items. So keep up, keep up the good work. I really think we're doing a good job of not over complicating educating our young ones.
Good.
Yeah. Short and sweet.
Well, I'll just add, this board did a wonderful job reviewing the, the proposals for the delegate assembly, and Josh really did a nice job. I was very proud to be part of Three Lakes and how well he represented us. Excellent questions. You've got to really have a close ear to what is being said between the lines in these kind of situations. And I just felt that we're very in tune with what is going on legislatively, and that was really important, that our presence was felt there, to the point that a few different districts, I think, probably approached Josh and myself and wanted to know, you know, where we get our ideas and our advice, and, you know, very supportive. So I thought that was excellent. A second piece of that is that the hard, hard work that our teachers have been doing, especially with the literacy focus and the elementary programming, they have had a heavy lift in Amy Johnson and Carrie, and the principals have done a really nice job with that. And I felt that, again, hearing that we heard, I could feel like, check, we've already done that. Yes, we're doing that. We're leading the way on that. So it was really exciting to know that Three Lakes is pretty innovative and great job to everybody.
Michelle?
I thought it was very impressive that our school district does not have the problems of many of the school districts that were there. I was very surprised to hear the other schools and what they're dealing with and what they're having to go through. And I was thanking the stars that we are such a good school district, have a great staff, and we don't have to deal with that. It's just amazing that we are on the right path and things are going so well.
That's one of the things that you have an opportunity to connect with other board members and such, at this gathering and such, so you get a chance to discuss things. It is sometimes enlightening.
Carrie.
Stacy?
Yeah, thankful for the opportunity to attend this conference. It's, it's a lot of information, and I, it's exciting to learn and hear different things. There were some amazing speakers. We got to go to a phenomenal speaker that is going to eventually come to the staff in next fall or something.
October.
Yes.
Scheduled?
Super awesome. I hope I can get invited.
You are.
That's really awesome. I mean, he was, I mean, phenomenal, one of the highlights of the, of the week for sure. Phenomenal speaker and very powerful and lots of interesting things. So that's, that's exciting for you guys upcoming. Some other great, you know, again, just hearing what other schools are doing and, and getting neat ideas of some, you know, exciting things that they're doing. And, and again, the positive stuff that we're doing and hearing some of the issues that other schools are having. Was pretty proud to, to be from Three Lakes, so very, so thank you for the opportunity to go, because it is worth it, even though it causes a lot of stress. My family. They just realized I'm sending in their mama. But it was very, very worth it, for sure.
I had a great conference, and again, thanks to the district. I mean, it's, it's, I think it's a great opportunity for a board member to go down and see what others are doing. And, and you sit in these sessions, and you listen, and you try to glean something that you can pull out of it. And I sat at, at, one of them was the capital maintenance planning, which I thought was right in line to some of the things that we're going to be talking about here real soon in the district, looking at some of the things that, you know, we should be considering as board members when we go through the capital maintenance planning. And so it was good to hear another perspective in terms of somebody that's been there, done that kind of a thing. And so that was, that was very good to sit through. Another one, and actually, Michelle, you were in with the active learning session.
Yes.
I think that was Pulaski, wasn't it?
It was, yes.
Put that session on. And as a district, every year, they are refurbishing, I guess, I think it's three classrooms a year. That's kind of what they have on their timetable. And basically setting up spaces for students in a variety of seating arrangements, so they can do their collaboration, they can do their individualized, you know, work, they can do their, you know, learning centers, I guess, on different levels. Some are sitting, some are up at high. And basically, a lot of it is student led in terms of how they choose, where they sit, kind of a thing. One of the things that did go along with that, and they strongly recommended, is if you go with any of that active learning environment in your classrooms, that you have an added dose of classroom management training. And so that place that had to go hand in hand.
I was actually in on that one as well, and it was just amazing to see the videos of these kids. And they just, I mean, it was like, I mean, they, they just moved these desks and did these things and configured the stuff, and it was just like part of their daily routine. And it was, it was, yeah, I really enjoyed that one, too. It was really spectacular to, and allowing them to have choice in, in their seating and, yeah.
The last one I mentioned, and probably, I'm going to say probably, one of the most interesting topics in Terry and I sat on, on one of these sessions, had to do on literacy. And, and they had a strong emphasis on the science of reading. And, you know, I think a big part of me probably took reading for granted, kind of a thing, you know, where you don't think too much about it. And I spent a fair amount of time at the Wisconsin Literacy Task Force booth, and, and talked to the individuals there, and, you know, probably opened my eyes more than I have ever had in terms of, I guess, the discussion of the science of reading. And, you know, I remember years ago, when ours, when our kids were in school, the whole language was kind of the thing that was going to tip the balance and move everybody into, you know, being proficient readers. And, and I think we're retracing our steps to going back to a lot of fanatics and such like that, and understanding how the brain decodes and has the ability to learn and understand language. And I thought it was really fascinating. And, and probably the biggest take is, as Terry mentioned, we've done a lot of things in this regard in improving, I guess, how we teach reading. But we do have a resource of, I think, very, it's, it's definitely sitting there when we would want to take advantage of it. It's Wisconsin Reads, the Wisconsin Literary Task Force, and you probably have reached out to them in the past. But these are individuals that are just passionate about the science of reading. And so we do have options of, you know, reaching out and getting, I guess, resources available to us. Terry and I also sat in on the document, Terry. It's actually, it's soon to be released, called The Truth About Reading, and talked about individuals that have gone through life, many of them very successful, can't read, or they're subliterate. And one of them was actually a teacher in California. So kind of eye opening on some of the things that people go through the system and find a way of being successful. But they're now addressing this issue about them not being able to read and, but at a point in their life where, you know, I wouldn't say too late, but they wish they would have done sooner. So as a whole, across the United States, it's, it definitely is a growing issue. And thankfully, I think we've done a lot of steps into being, I guess, again, what I want to say, a leader in this regard. And so I took some books back from them, and I got some information I'll pass on to Terry. And, yeah, so excellent conference, and, yeah, always worth it. So.
Speaker Stacy mentioned, if anybody has the opportunity to see Tom Thibodeau from the Turbo University. Amazing, amazing speaker, like she said.
Yeah. Some passionate people out there, aren't there? All right. Next, School Forest Camp Three Update Report.
Want to go, or should I go?
How about if you go first, and then I'll add some tidbits here.
There's not a ton of updates, other than I know by virtue of a few emails, I see one back and forth between DNR officials and DNR employees, I should say, and MSA employees, that there's conversation back and forth and getting things tied up with the permit process. So I wish I could tell you, permit pretty process is all done, but to see those emails going back and forth means that it's been worked on. So that is really the extent of updates that I've got. So that is, is really the extent of updates that I've, I've got.
And I would just add to that, they're very thorough emails with very specific questions, like 20 points. So, um, they are doing their due diligence, which is exactly what needs to be done. Um, looking at the maps very closely. Um, it's back in the hands of MSA answering those questions. And then, so at this moment in time, our application is on hold until that information is clarified and then it'll be resubmitted through them. So my dad always told me when he was in the army, you always had to hurry up and wait. And, and so I'm wondering if maybe that's kind of like the DNR process too. But I give them credit, they're doing a good job, they're doing a thorough job. And we should have all questions answered when we're done with the process.
Great. All right, very good. Thank you for that report. District-related positive happenings. Who's up to bat?
I have one. We had kind of a short lead with the snow days and everything coming back. But, uh, we had our, um, hot chocolate and cookies sale today, sponsored by Student Council, Mrs. Ryan, Mrs. Oval. Um, which is great in itself, but we also had a number of parents that donated money to sponsor like entire classrooms. And there's other parents that came in and donated this cash for anybody that didn't have anything. So everybody was able to go through the line and get something. So that was pretty cool.
Thanks.
I'll go. There. Um, the, what I want to like highlight is, and, and you guys talked a little bit about it, like an engaged student is a learning student, no matter what level you're at. And this, this kind of is double, a, a, a double, uh, positive happening. Number one, I got to give Jen kudos because if you follow our Facebook, District Facebook page at all, our social media, like you, you can see the chronicles of different places in our district where, where kids are engaging and, and a couple of things. Um, Mrs. Crowe, I think may have gone, uh, but the, the engagement that we get to see when we're sitting down in that classroom, I, I get invited to be the, uh, ramen cook-off, one of the ramen cook-offs, the judges. And the cross-curricular, uh, work that you see with those kids in that project. You, you feel like you're in a Food Network TV show. It's awesome. It's awesome. Um, Mr. Busco's crew down, uh, getting us another bid to the state finance and investment bowl challenge. Um, these things are all things that Jen puts out to, to the world on, on social media. The, and, and I always mess up the pronunciation as I used to call them catapults, but Tribuché, Tribuché project that Mr. Stotts' class did. Like, wow, talk about cross-curricular sort of project. And, and if you look at some of the photos of the kids in that project, like you don't get that sort of excitement of a learning from an online lab or a textbook. You know? This, this is good stuff, really good stuff. Um, I, I, I saw Matthew's crew in, 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 in the gym when, when there was a few who, and, and when I say cross-curricular, I mean, think of the math, think of the science, think of the work that some of those kids did in somebody's shop. It, it was here for some of the kids, I know they did it in, in their wind time projects. And some of it I know was at home. But to see that work come together, and then there were three or four groups that were like tied with distance of how far they tossed it. Did you know that?
Oh, gosh, yes.
And then Stotts went for accuracy and he makes his hula hoop and, and he makes it about the gym. Matthew's crew was dropping in that hoop every time. I'm like, how are you doing that? And they, they're, they're measuring, they're going back and it, and it was like this. Like, good, really good stuff, really good stuff.
He only got second for distance though, he was a little bummed about that. He got for accuracy.
Accuracy, they were, they were hit in the middle of that bullseye every time whether where Mr. Stotts moved it. So, but that, but that's just, that kind of stuff gets kids excited about learning. And I, I appreciate it that we have staff that, uh, get kids going in that direction. The, the cornhole project for a local event, the, all those boards that the kids are making. The, the project that's right out here on, on the wall, you know? And I think the kids are probably in the news tonight. So that's, that's good stuff. That's what I want to follow up on, positive happening.
To add on to that, when I left my house, my husband was sawing a plunger, um, off of the plunger to use for a bowstring lighter or a whatever.
Oh, for, for horses, for outside, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, there was a plunger on the counter when I left. And then there was a drivel going in the other room. I don't know.
I don't want to get old.
I have one. Um, last week we got to, uh, kind of awaited because it was snowy, um, the spotlight for the wrestling. So Travis Larson was a freshman. When I was a senior, I got to wrestle with him. Uh, he passed away, uh, I believe, two years ago now. And his family donated some money for, to the wrestling team. And, um, either Coach Fink, I believe it was Coach Fink and, and Coach Center came up with this idea of putting up a spotlight. Um, and I know when I coached in Gillette, we had a spotlight. It was just on the mat. And it's a pretty cool opportunity. And, uh, it was well-received. In fact, Jen said it was the highest hit post out there.
That was also the hardest photography I've done all year.
Yeah.
Because not only was it like contrast, but that was an LED light. So when you're shooting with an LED, it's pulsing. So you get every other shot will be like half black or half, you know, like you have to really time your shutter speed with the cycle of the LED lights. So just to put that in perspective, it was, it was intriguingly difficult.
So I forwarded the Blue Jay Buzz to, um, and I don't have his email, but to Kelly Griesbach, who knows Dean Larson, which would be Travis's nephew. And he thought it was pretty cool photos, so, um, it was a, a good thing.
Very good.
Yeah, the cornhole thing that was on a segment last night on Channel 12. And I love the collaboration with another school district and community project, hand in hand. That's just, it's, it's good stuff. Yeah. And, uh, so, you know, and you know, twist us a little bit to make this into a positive happening. Uh, because at, at the convention, there was the future classroom. All right, I got to go see that. Well, it was a teacher in front of a computer Zoom class. It's like, well, okay, I'm not, I'm not excited. So, you know, you talk about our teachers want to do these hands-on activities. That's a positive thing. That's how we engage students. Yeah.
Mike, I have one. About our food service team. Uh, worked to put together a grant for the local foods program. Um, the state received a bunch of money from the federal government for a local foods program, which means you could purchase your items within 400 miles of where you are. And they wrote a grant and we received $10,000 to purchase non-processed foods and to expand our offerings here at the school. Includes meat, eggs, fruit, all sorts of things, and it's all the spots in.
Nice.
Great job.
Excellent.
Have to buy a dozen eggs. Depends where you get them.
Verbal chicken.
All right, anybody else? All right.
I, I would just say one, you know, kudos to everybody for keeping everybody in line. There has been a lot of activities, there's been a lot of great things all around. So thank you to the district, thank you to the teachers and, and everyone for keeping everybody in line and, and in the right places and doing the right things.
What was the soup thing? The soup cook-off thing? What was that?
How's your sodium level, Justin?
Thirteen soups is a challenge. Like, I love food.
Was it ramen, ramen cook-off?
Oh, that's.
Or no, oh, no, 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 the soup was the teacher, that was the teacher thing, right?
That's right. It's, it's food class. This, this, what, what, right, Michelle's bringing up is the. That's right, the teacher. On Friday, the staff lunch.
Service day, yeah.
Staff chili and soup. And everybody's a judge, so.
But there was one winner.
There was. Repeat winner. And you win last year?
Wow.
And it's all blind judging. You don't get to know whose entry is whose.
So what was the winning soup?
Jambalaya.
It was, yeah. Did you call jumbo, like a jambalaya, dumbo kind of thing? It's good. It's good. There was literally 13 different options. And the staff all like potlucks that, plans it. It's really cool.
Yeah.
Nice.
Great idea. All right. We'll move on to our last piece of work in front of us, the WASB Correspondence Updates.
The only thing, the only thing I have to share with you is that on February 23rd, there is going to be the WASB, uh, School Law Conference. It's a day session down at the Wisconsin Dells. So if you're interested in it, this is the information. Um, I looked at the sessions. I believe most of them were available or covered at our convention. And we do have the ability to watch the recorded ones, so don't feel pressure.
All right. Perfect. Okay, that leads us to adjournment, someone prepared to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All those in favor of the motion signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Guess we all want to leave. Motion passes, four zero.